But it's not so hard, but like.
How we doing? How we doing? All good here?
And but I.
Thank you.
Girl, when you're in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I honestly. Well, I usually. During the morning, the morning. I work at night. I don't work at the radio station, so I'm there. Well, I work at I know now, so I'm with. Yeah. Yeah. This was July, we already started, started yesterday. But yeah, I went down with coast. What's your target? Coast of South. Yeah. Ah, it's good to you. Yeah. Yeah. Probably. Thank you. Like. Do you have anyone on speakers? No, we don't. Richardson?
Yeah.
Sure. invocation.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order at four oh five P M. And we'll start out with the invocation. Speaker Kamacho, can you please lead us?
Father, if you're somebody who today will bless this meeting, as we discussed, this is at hand, then guide us to the proper and correct solutions that have been brought before us today. We pay for the ability, the security, the direction we need to take, the care and well being of our community. As we look with vision, we are serving, caring and sharing beyond to us a life of service. Amen.
If we can all face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic or which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, city clerk, can you begin with roll call, please? Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Also, ever Kamacho.
Yes.
Councilmember Laura.
Here.
Mayor Brooke and Lex.
Here.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez.
Here.
All present. We'll start with this special meeting. This is a special meeting. Do we have any public comments? Via email or via Zoom? No cards from the audience. Thank you. So our first agenda item, we are going to begin with a presentation. A city, city manager could be having changes to the agenda?
Yes, item number two, we can hear that first. We have consultants online that have to get to this meeting.
Okay. So let's begin with item number two, the adoption of resolution calling for election, presenting business license fee adjustment, initiative measure and adoption of resolution, getting priorities for written arguments and directing city attorney to prepare, the impartial analysis for business license fee of adjustment measures.
Thank you, Mayor City Council. As you recall, council approved the item to go forward to conduct poll. Richard from F N three is here to present those results. And then at the end of that hearing, request approval to move the item to develop. Richard?
Okay, good afternoon, council member, mayor, mayor pro tem, city staff, thank you for inviting me to present the results of your, your voter survey. I'm wondering, is the city going to be placing the graphs up for presentation? Or do you need me to share?
Yes, we can share it.
Great, thank you.
Sure, thank you, Richard.
We'll get one.
Will it, will it come up on Zoom or should I? Okay, great, perfect, thanks. Great, thank you so much. All right. So first slide, please. And there was, and the final work product does not have the consultant working draft on it. The items that will be shared with council and public will be available and they're not consulting work. We conducted the survey between June twenty seventh and July fourteenth, so very fresh data. We conducted a dual mode survey, which means a random portion of the sample conducted the survey online and a random portion conducted the survey on the telephone. And we interviewed a random sample of four hundred and twenty one city of Pico Rivera voters who are likely to vote in a November twenty twenty two general election based on their past voter history or if they've recently registered to vote. Questions asked of everyone, the margin there is plus or minus four point nine percent. And in some cases, we randomly selected half the sample to answer some questions and another random half to answer others. For the reasons that we had many questions and we didn't want to overburden your voters as well as the fact we wanted to test different kind of framing, different kind of ways of talking about certain things to see if there's a difference and you'll see a difference when I get to a couple of slides into the presentation. There, the margin of errors plus or minus six point nine. We contacted voters by telephone, email and text. And of course, we made the survey available both online and on the phone in English and Spanish. And if you're very quick in math and notice something doesn't quite equal a hundred percent, I blame that entirely on rounding error. So next slide, please, and then follow up. Next slide, and then one more, please. So we began the survey prior to asking about a potential business license fee by asking just sort of general perceptions. And the first question, which we typically ask in all surveys is, do they think that things in the city are generally headed in the right direction or if do they feel that things are off on the wrong track? The reason we do this is because generally we want to get a sense of the mood of the electorate as we move into this particular survey. And I could tell you fifty eight percent say the cities head in the right direction. Twenty six percent say off on the wrong track and sixteen percent volunteer, they just didn't know enough to offer an opinion. Comparatively to what I'm seeing in other Southern California cities and cities across California is that these numbers are very strong. At a time with forty year high cost of living index and high gas prices, generally voters are in a disgruntled mood. In spite of the fact, cities, counties can't do very much in terms of cost of living and gas prices, they're generally not particularly happy. There are very few cities at this point in the last month or so that I've seen with as high numbers as your city, which to me indicates that people are happy with the direction that the city is going. And in fact, you have a little bit more than a two to one ratio of right direction, wrong track. So I would argue whatever you're doing, you should most likely continue to do what you're doing. Next slide, please. And then conceptually, before we ask the ballot question, we wanted to know if they even think you have a need for additional funds to provide services that a city residents need and want. And we offered them the option of great need, some need, little need or no real need, or folks volunteered that they didn't know enough to offer an opinion, that would be the don't know. Eighty percent said, said there was a great or some need for additional funds for the city to provide those additional services with forty two percent saying great need. Now, thinking about the fact that at least for this survey, we're looking at a general purpose measure, which is a fifty plus one measure on the ballot in order to be successful to have eighty percent, eight and ten, saying there is a need for additional funds is very, very good place to start. Now you remember it's a conceptual question, so we didn't ask how that money would come, come to the city. Some might think, oh, maybe the county or the state or the feds will give you more money. The chances are probably not so much. But nonetheless, they recognize the need. Next slide, please. And now I'd like to move into the business fee measure. You will notice in a moment, when we go to the next slide, we present them with a ballot question that says tax. Um, we have been since the survey, we, we've spoken to your legal counsel who has reviewed the statutes and indicated this is not a tax and this is a fee. But I wanted to be true to the data. And so where you see the word tax in reality and moving forward, whether you choose to place this measure on or not, this is considered to be legally a fee. And I'm sure if you have questions, your legal counsel will confirm this. Next slide, please. So we asked them what I'll call a hypothetical ballot question, because ultimately I know it will be the council in your best judgment, working with your legal counsel to determine if you choose to place it on the ballot, what the seventy five words would look like. However, of course, you have to appreciate, I had to ask something. So we created, working with your legal counsel, a question that included what the money could be used for. Remember, it's a general purpose. So we can't promise anything, but we looked at what you use for money in the general fund. We were closely with your staff, which by the way, really helped out and made the quality of the survey much better, so I thank them for it. And we tried to get a sense of what city priorities are, i.e. council priorities are. And we try to mirror with what we know typically scores well with voters in your area of Southern California. And we created this ballot question and we read it to them. This is an ordinance to simplify Pico Rivera's business license tax rates for fairness to all businesses and indicated what the changes would be. And according to your finance folks, it should generate approximately five point eight million annually. And of course, there would be some accountability as required legally to incorporate. We have since, and you'll see when you're deliberating whether or not to place something on a ballot, we have used this survey to improve the ballot question to really reflect the concerns of your residents as well as the concerns of that the staff provided us and worked with your legal counsel to make it much more simple for people to understand what they were, what they are voting for if you choose to place it on the ballot. Okay, so we asked this ballot question and then next slide, please. We said to them, if there were an election today, would you vote yes in favor or no to oppose? If they said they would vote yes in favor, we said, is that definitely yes? Or probably yes, because we want to know the intensity of support, i.e. the percentage of folks who say definitely yes. And if they said no, we asked them, is that definitely or probably no? Because we want to know the intensity of the opposition, i.e. the percentage who say definitely no. If they were undecided, we said, well, would you lean yes? Or would you lean no? If they said they would lean yes, we put them in the yes camp. If they said they lean no, we put them in the no camp. And for those folks who said, you know, I need more information, I can't tell you either way, they are the pure undecided. In this case, the, in this question, it's seven percent. So on the initial vote for a fifty plus one measure, you're at fifty seven percent yes, thirty six percent no and seven percent undecided. Next slide, please. And I wanted to give you a sense from the original question I asked as to whether they even think you, you need additional funds to provide the services that residents need and want. If, if I were in the group, the eighty one percent that said there's a great or some need, sixty one percent is voting yes, that blue bar is that total yes, the orange is a total no and the gray is the undecided. If I perceive there's little or no real need, it's forty one percent that are voting yes. This tells me the more you can educate that there is a need for additional funds, the more likely they are to be inclined to support the measure on the initial question. Next slide, please. We then gave them a list of thirty voter priorities. And these are things that the money could be used for. Again, you can't promise anything in a general purpose measure, you could just promise the money would go into general fund and it would be at the discretion of the council to make the appropriate social and public policy decisions of where the money goes. That being said, next slide. We presented over a series of slides thirty items. And we said regardless of whether you support this measure, how important would it be to you that it was included in the ballot measure? The dark blue is extremely important. The mid color blue is very important. And I've aggregated the extremely and very important on the right hand side. The dullest of the blue is somewhat important. The orange is not too important and that slight slate, a sliver of gray are the folks who said they didn't know. So of the thirty items, I'll get to the substance in a minute, but I want to tell you a little about this. Of the thirty items, sixteen, sixteen items were in the eighties in terms of extremely and very important. Twelve are in the seventies and only two are in the sixties and above the two thirds mark. So the first thing I want to tell you is this, even if you choose not to move forward on this particular measure, this is an invaluable list of items, because we rarely get a chance to see what voters prioritize. The other thing, so if, if you move into budget considerations and other, other discussions, this is a very helpful list for you to, to look at. The other thing I want to say is, in most cities, I get a couple of eighties, maybe I'm lucky, some seventies, mostly sixties and fifties. The fact that you have so many in the eighties and seventies tells me that the council is in sync with the voter priorities. You very much are listening and hearing what they have to say for these numbers to be extremely high. I rarely get that dark blue in the sixties and in the high fifties. And yet you have a number of items that are that in that case. So among the lead items are protecting local drinking water sources through runoff and the issues about storm drains, that kind of thing. Keeping public areas clean and safe, which both deals with the issue of homelessness as well as in this day and age, issues of COVID, preventing thefts and property crimes. And I wanted to show you what a change of one word could mean. So if you looked at property thefts and property crimes, sixty one percent said extremely important. If you go down one item to reducing crimes, fifty four, fifty four percent said extremely important. The change of a couple of words makes a difference here of seven points in terms of intensity. That's very important for you to acknowledge as well as repairing streets and puddles, fifty one percent extremely important, repairing streets, forty two percent. That one change can make a difference in terms of us passing the measure and not passing the measure. And when we helped the legal counsel in drafting this ballot question for your consideration, I'm not trying to get ahead of you, but this will be part of the package for your deliberations at some point. We took this into account in terms of the, the framing. That being said, clearly crime is an issue, streets are an issue and protecting the, the city's long term financial stability. Next slide. And as we go down the list, then the items are still really high. Addressing homelessness, that dark blue jumps up again to the fifties, supporting neighborhood park and school sheriff's patrols at fifty percent. I says, this is, this survey happened after the events in Texas at the, the unfortunate events at Texas at the school. And I think this is very much top of mind among voters, not only in your city, but in others. And, and next slide, as you could go, as you go down the list and you'll have access to these items, the lowest items and still in the mid to high sixties is revitalizing rundown business quarters such as Whittier Boulevard and supporting senior programs. And I can assure you that senior programs, that number is low only because there are some households that don't have seniors. And so they're not quite sure what exactly the city does for seniors. But if I'm a senior, I want you to keep those programs coming. Next slide, please. All right, and now I'd like to move in to the educational and critical statements to show you, oh, we're trying to simulate what happens if you do educational outreach and if people in the city criticize the potential measure, so you could see how resilient the measure is or not based on that. We're, we're effectively simulating a campaign until November, but at one point in time. The next slide, please. So as you know, you can't, as you know, you can't advocate, but you can educate. And so we presented them with a number of educational statements which included the explanation of that this fee, this business fee is intended to be a fair and to take the burden off local mom and pop local businesses in the city. And it's an outdated law that I believe is something like sixty four years old and you just want to update it. And then that the money could be used for a variety of youth services to provide programs for at risk youth. We talk about addressing issues related to crime, streets and homelessness and that there would be accountability in the measure. After explaining to them a little bit about the measure in a non advocacy way, we re-asked that ballot question that you saw earlier. You could see on the left hand side, that was the initial vote on just ballot summary. You'll recall it was fifty seven, yes, thirty six, no, seven undecided. After education, the definitely yes went up fourteen points. That's a huge increase, far beyond the margin of error of almost five percent. And the total yes goes up twelve points to sixty nine percent. And you effectively have a three to one yes to no ratio, sixty nine, yes, twenty three, no, and eight percent undecided. But it would be important for us to test some critical statements, because not everyone is gonna sort of be on the side of the yes side. So we tested a variety of oppositional statements, including the fact that we are at forty year high taxed consumer price index that gas prices are high. And there are clearly issues related to the local school bond that people are mindful of. We also tested a message about waste and inefficiency. We hear that in every government, city government and county and the like, not unique to yours, that if you just cut spending and waste, you'll have a plenty of money to do what you, what needs to be done. And we also talked a little bit about the fact that there is money available from the recovery act and that you do have a, you do have resources in your reserve, which of course you know you're there, that are there for emergencies. That being said, next slide, we re-asked the ballot question. Here are some opposite, here are some of the educational statements that I talked about earlier. And then if we can, among the leads of which there are many where we asked, tell us if it would make you more inclined to vote yes on the measure outlining the, the fair share argument, seventy nine percent said it was much more inclined, somewhat more inclined to vote yes. The youth discussion, seventy nine percent said more inclined, these are very high numbers. You have really a good story to tell that really is resilient with your, or persuasive or convincing with your electorate. Next slide, and you'll, we'll go down the list of educational statements about crime, streets, the need for funds for homelessness. Next slide, please. And you could see all of these numbers are extremely high, way above that fifty plus one threshold, the weakest of the arguments and still some cities might have been the strongest argument is the fact that this is local control. The money is, 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 is taken in by the city and the city chooses what to do with it, because you have the best knowledge as to what, what the problems are and what needs to be addressed. Next slide. And then after the critical statements that we provided, we re-asked that ballot question. And the initial vote with just ballot summary was fifty seven, thirty six. After education was sixty nine, twenty three. After critical statements, it's fifty four, thirty three with thirteen percent undecided. And then if I can go to conclusions. Next slide. Next slide. All right, so initially a majority support the measure, but they were above the fifty plus one threshold and even above the margin of error. After education, overall support increases pretty dramatically to twelve points. This tells me that educational is critical, education is critical. Now you can advocate, but you can educate. Support even on the definitely yes increases to forty four percent. Almost, you know, pretty close to that fifty plus one that's needed. After critical statements, support drops to fifty four percent within the margin of error, but above the threshold of fifty plus one. This measure appears viable at this point in time. However, support is within the margin of error of fifty percent threshold for passage and will require educational outreach effort to inform voters of the need for funding in the community and the need to simplify the business fee and frankly, make it fair, particularly for small businesses. And with that, I just want to remind you, this is not considered a tax, but a fee. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council? They put in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had one question for clarification, the survey quantity was how many individuals?
Yes, it was four hundred and twenty one. We anticipated, given you the likely voter scenario that you, we could, might be able to get four hundred, but we were lucky enough to be able to get a little bit more than that. And that provides a margin of error of plus or minus four point nine. To put it in context, we do statewide measures of eight hundred, sometimes a thousand. So this kind of places it in context.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, council member Lyons.
Mr. Bernard, I, I want you, I want to highlight one of the comments that you made and actually make it a little bit you know, more specific in, in its nature. You generally, most economic studies reveal that in public policy issues such as tax increases and fees, that the most successful are those fees and taxes that are attached specifically to a task. Now, from your presentation, you outline the, the various needs and so. So would you advise that, you know, that we promote the educational portion of this in that this would be addressing a need, a specific need?
That's a great question, so I appreciate it. So I, I, as you know, but I guess I'll be educating the public. A dedicated measure, i.e. very specific to. A dedicated measure, i.e. very specific to money going to a specific area. Is considered to be a two thirds measure, much harder in any case to pass. Though, of course, we can identify in L.A. County, a number of examples such as measure R, measure M, which was for transportation, measure W. Which was for clean water. So the threshold, the the intensity and the the difficulty of passing two thirds is difficult. That being said, you are allowed to give illustrative examples. And what I find in this in the survey is that you're the my understanding of the council priorities, and I'll let you speak if I'm 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 misstating it. Your priorities are dead on with voter priorities. And if you can identify the top items that you could envision, the general fund would fund. I think that would be very, very helpful. But by law, you couldn't guarantee that money is, but they would have to, you know, you, you know, you would have to effectively say, this is what. Our budget looks like, this is how we would appropriate the money or a portion of the money. And that's how I would do it. But you couldn't technically say, you know, we're guaranteeing that five hundred thousand dollars is going to go to homeless. Because then that changes the nature of the of the measure. I hope I answered your question.
I, yes, you did. And again, you you explained it quite clearly when you said that this, these funds are going into the general fund. So again, we could basically do our education program specifically saying, we're going to address the issues that you have brought to our attention.
Correct. Thank you. That's a great question.
Okay, Councilmember Laura.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bernard, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for the slides. It was very helpful, it was very concise. It's obviously you guys have given a lot of thought to this in terms of approaching the public. My question is, what was the estimated or potential forecasted voter turnout for this November?
Okay, so if you'll bear with me, this is the benefit of being at my desk, so I can look it up. So if I can find it quickly, if not, I can get it to you. Here we go. So we anticipate, sorry, okay, here we go. Okay, so you have thirty about thirty six thousand eight hundred and twenty two. When I pulled the sample, you had thirty six, thirty six thousand eight hundred and twenty two voters. We anticipate approximately twenty two thousand five hundred and thirty voters will be likely to vote in November. Of course, there are variables that we can't, you know, anticipate. For example, if the former president chooses to to claim he'll be coming in to the. To the November twenty twenty four election, there will be that will energize. The Republicans and the Democrats, they may come out and vote or not come out and vote. The decisions such as the Supreme Court in terms of overturning Roe v. Wade. Will have it had it will have it had an impact on whether people come or not come out to vote. So certain things we can anticipate, but based on past voter history. We anticipate that about twenty two thousand five hundred and thirty voters will come out and vote.
Thank you very much for the concise answer. I appreciate once again your work and thank you for bringing this before us.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I have a question. This may be for our our city attorney as well, but. In twenty twenty, we had a ballot measure regarding a travel and tourism, and it was titled tax. That one was unsuccessful in passing. Were there any questions that are in your survey in terms of any indication about the residents view in terms of this tax? The language that you did use is tax as as it's read here. Were there any negativity or or any caution about the word tax?
It's hard to isolate the word tax. I I will tell you from my past experience, the word fee scores much better than the word tax. And it also helps because, and as you will note, we worked with your legal counsel to make it very clear. In the ballot question that this this fee will not be posed directly on voters, on your residents. And I think that is very helpful in nature, both those elements.
Thank you. And Mayor, it's important to note that this is not, well, the the business license fee established in the municipal code is simply that, it's a fee. So that every every business that operates in town has to pay a fee to operate in town. And in working with our consultant, we we discussed and defined this measure as a business license fee, not a tax. And that made it abundantly clear that it's not anything that's going to be imposed upon the business.
So given that, can we change the wording that was provided here in in the section that says people are there as the business license tax rates for fairness? Can we replace that with fee? And then in the in the second portion, it's a thousand dollars in gross receipts for other business, a twenty five dollar minimum tax. Can we then replace that with fee as well?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'll make sure that anywhere there's the word tax, it's replaced with the word fee.
I believe the seventy five word ballot title that is being proposed has made all those changes. But I'm going to ask legal counsel to confirm that.
We'll double check that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at the placeholder. There's the one that's on our agenda, starting off to improve nine eleven response. And the placeholder on our packet to maintain increased sheriff's patrols. Both. In my opinion, don't meet the standard that we would want our voters to be encouraged to vote yes. And the reason why I say that is if we look at our packet on items that are important to voters, the phrasing. On item number, slide number eleven, we look at repairing streets and potholes. That has a negative connotation. I would recommend modernizing the streets. The other item maintaining essential services. That again, should be changed to upgrading essential city services. There is another one, maintaining and increasing nine one one response. That again, should be called streamlining nine one one response. As you had mentioned, Mr. Bernard, phrasing is crucial. And often voters make a decision in a split second. And so too many words or word salad can confuse people and vote no on items. So I would recommend that we change this phrasing on this placeholder and. Ensure that it is exact and creates an image in the voters' minds that it's something positive because it is positive. The funds from this upgraded license fee will be to the benefit of every single people Rivera voter. So we want to ensure that that wording highlights that. So as our mayor did say, we will have opportunity to upgrade this wording, is that correct? Mr. City Manager and Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for ten, yes, I mean, the the points you bring out are excellent points. The PowerPoint that's presented to you this evening is for your benefit. But I think if we're going to distribute that or disseminate that to the electorate, we can make those changes.
Mayor, if I if I may, this is Councilmember Andrew Laura. I I I want to thank Councilmember Lux for his observation and his suggestions. My only caught word of caution is that when we start to change the language that was already presented to these potential voters. Then it skews the potential numbers. I would rather keep the language that was asked of them, how how, you know, deficient we may think it is. But that what was, that's what was shown to them. And they already responded favorably by large numbers when that language was already in front of them. So my fear is that by unilaterally and by changing that language in a in a vacuum. We may, you know, it's kind of like the butterfly that flapped its wings. You don't know what outcome you're going to get. I'd rather say with something that was put before our voters. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if I may add, the suggestions that are being offered by the council are not looking to adjust or modify. The ultimate ballot language that will be placed before the voters. So all of these suggestions really are directed or addressing ancillary information or educational.
In our education.
Materials. But the in in this highlighted by Councilmember Laura, the the. The language of the ballot measure is going to be exactly as we presented to the council tonight. So if the council today approves this, it will be that language. And all of the informational or educational information will incorporate the suggestions that are being made by the council. All points are very well taken.
Madam Mayor, if I could give additional commentary. I wanted to highlight the opportunity of being responsible stewards or what you call stewardship. And that's taking care of something like a large household or in our case, our community, our city. And so us five members of this council, we are and have proved with our city council staff of being responsible. With with our funds that benefit our community members over time. So I'm for this ballot measure. And I hope that the residents see it as a benefit because it goes directly to them visually and in their services and in their parks and in their streets. But I do want to emphasize that the wording here needs improvement. In my mind, this is a draft that needs to be upgraded with just slight changes. If we're afforded an opportunity to upgrade this phrasing, it does not inspire me as a voter. I see it as a, oh, here's another opportunity. I'm not sure what it means. But if we upgrade the wording, as I had suggested earlier, I think it'll invigorate our voters that much more. And given that there's a error of margin, was it six percent, Mr. Bernard?
Four point nine percent.
Four point nine, yes. And we're being optimistic that there's going to be approximately twenty two thousand voters in a non election year. That may be a little promising. Perhaps on non presidential years, there's probably around seven to ten thousand voters that come out and vote. Either by mail or in person. So again, if we have an opportunity to upgrade this phrase, and I really would like to take advantage of that. And I am looking forward to putting this ballot measure to ensure the economic. Security of our of our community.
I have one more question for our assistant city manager. We had a presentation on our capital improvement project. What was the total amount of the unfunded portion of those improvement projects?
That was about sixty nine to seventy million dollars over the next five years alone.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I I think I I do support this measure. I know that this year we are in a surplus and we we have a healthy budget. But looking towards the future, we do have several unfunded projects. And I I think that this is this is essential in in securing the security of our financial future.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to add to the mix. I I concur with my colleagues' statements. I I see that every word is going to be key. I don't want to get caught up too much on just the ballot placeholder here. Other than making sure that we do a proper campaign, educating the voters as to what this is and what is not. Because as the mayor pointed out, one thing that is clear to all of us, the difference between tax and a fee is definitely very. In front of the minds of our voters, of the residents that we could read up. As the DOT that was mentioned in past, the last election cycle, that tax only the hotels and hotels that we have, but the other didn't pass because of the taxing fees. Unfortunately, in the past, folks have, you know, an election have campaign on reducing taxes, whether it be sales taxes or property taxes, which we're not. Although it's not, property tax can't be reduced, and no sales taxes should have a measure in itself. But the voters will jump on in from the positive and support anyone to bring forward reduction of taxes. But in the opposite, here we're asking an increase of fee that would generate several million dollars of return we can use for all of these services. Whether it be public safety and economic development, parks renovation. But once again, I think it's very clear that the tax, the fee, although this is very important to us, if it's not properly presented. Somebody can take it differently. And so we'll try and make sure that this is well educated, a well presented campaign that educates the voters on these measures. Because once again, people hear taxes, if or not.
Mayor and City Council, we will do a robust education outreach program for this. We will bring on additional consultants to move forward to assist us with that effort. I'd like to remind council that we haven't updated our fees since we were incorporated. So seventy year old fee structure, it's unequitable. It penalizes our small businesses, so this will definitely level the playing field and protect our small businesses moving forward.
And one other note, Mayor, we will, we we have until August twelfth, and the limit is to submit everything to the county. We will work collaboratively with the consultant, with the city manager's office in our office. So I think if the council is ready to approve the measure and substantially the form as presented, taking into effect and consideration. All of the comments this evening, we can can adopt that. And then if there's minor tweaks that we need to do, accomplish that.
Madam Mayor, examples, if we look at the phrasing now, let's look at the very first line, to improve nine one one response. We could say, what does improvement mean? We can call it streamline or upgrade nine one one response. That is a positive description. Improve is vague. If we go to address homelessness, address homelessness could possibly be. Upgraded to minimize homelessness or tackle homelessness. Repair streets and potholes. That would be best phrased upgrade local streets and potholes. So those are the suggestions that I want my colleagues to be in line with if we were to make changes today. Just to get it out the door, if I could get a consensus.
I just cannot clarity on that, Councilmember, as a chairman, before nine eleven response, I know, but keep in mind that this chances into the exact word, right? So whatever we add, you have to remove something, is this the exact count here? I think the suggestions that are being made by the mayor for ten are singular words for singular words. So we we have to keep it within a seventy five word ballot measure. And Mayor Protem, if you can, again, I apologize. So instead of the word improve, the word you're suggesting is. I I was going to say.
Yes.
Improved before nine eleven response, improved nine eleven.
I I, yeah, so what I'm doing is I'm taking to improve and saying, remove the word to, remove the word improve and put upgrade. And the next item is repair streets and potholes. Okay, sorry, let me retract that. To improve should be replaced with streamline. Or modernize. I think I'm leaning more toward modernize. When it comes to the section of repair streets and potholes, I would replace repair to upgrade. Upgrade local streets and potholes. And address homelessness, minimize or tackle homelessness. Or address, address again, I would feel that it's vague. Reduce is clear cut. And. I like minimize, but it all means the same thing.
Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Laura, yes.
Once again, you know. I like baseball, I like baseball statistics. You know, you, I can, I can tell you how many hits a batter will probably get when they face. when they face a left-handed pitcher that he's faced before. Um, I give that example because the statisticians and pollsters that had presented to us already gave us what that score would potentially be, given the wording that they presented the public. I just want to caution once again that when we start to change that wording in a vacuum and by vacuum, this is what we're doing because we're don't, we don't have the time to then go out and test that new language against a four hundred and twenty potential respondents. Um, you know, I, you know, I, I want to go by data-driven results. This is the data that was given to us. It was given to us based and predicated upon the language that they use, which is to me, fine. That language is pretty standard across the industry, and I think it gets the point across. And they've done this more than once. But when we start to, you know, squabble over the semantics of stuff, it may look colorful. But unless you have the data to support the change, then we're, we're, we're governing in a vacuum and we're ignoring the data that's been done for us and presented to us. And, and that's my fear by doing this.
Thank you, Councilmember Lada. You know, I, I think that there are, these are just simple one words. Since you have my suggestion, replace the word tax with fee. Uh, replace those three words, you know, uh, modernize. Replace the, um, the three words that Mayor Protem adjusted. Those are just three minor words. I don't think it's going to make a huge difference. Yes.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Council, I just want to bring Richard. Richard, obviously, we brought him aboard. He has, um, many, many clients across the spectrum on, uh, these various initiatives. And I, I want him to opine on at this stage of, of making these changes. Um, he's the expert, so I, I, I do want to hear what he has to say.
Any comments, questions on this?
W- would that be okay if I spoke?
Of course, yes.
Yeah, all right. Um, I'm wondering if we could put the slides up again and look at slide eleven, please. So, um, I first want to say, uh, that I appreciate everything that the council members are saying. You obviously want to be responsive and reflective of, of your voter concerns. Um, yeah, it's not yet. Okay, here we go. So remember, the question was, I'm going to read you different ways in which the funds generated by this ballot measure could be spent. Regardless of how you feel about the measure, please tell me how important each item is to you personally. Is it extremely important, very important, somewhat important, not too important? And the, the dark blue is extremely important and the mid-color blue is very important. So your voters, and it's a random sample, so it represents likely November twenty-twenty-two voters. Your voters are telling you what they're reacting to. My experience, for example, with the word modernization, and you don't see this on the survey, is that in some cases, for, and, and I do a lot of school measures. And we always tell schools, don't say modernize your school, say upgrade or repair. Why? Because modernize sounds expensive. And upgrading and repairing reflects that you're doing your due diligence and you're being cost-effective. So that's why that word modernizing isn't there. But look at how strong you're talking. I mean, if I was running an election and I had eighty percent of folks telling me this is extremely or very important, that would be my agenda. And they're telling you protecting local drinking water sources, keeping public areas safe and clean, preventing thefts and property crimes. I know repairing streets and potholes is not sexy, but I've been successful in LA County helping pass Measure R and Measure M, two measures that you may like or not like, but they were successful. They were two-thirds measures. And the lead item in Measure R was repairing potholes. That was the framing of it. I know it doesn't sound glamorous, but voters don't want you to overspend. And words, words do matter. Absolutely correct. The, the council member who said that couldn't agree with you more. And that's why we test these individual words to really, um, identify the exact frame of one or two words that really resonates in your community. If these did not resonate in your community, I can assure you close to ninety percent, or let's be a little conservative and say, and more than eighty percent would not have said the word extremely or very important with respect to why, what they wanted in the measure. And we took that into account so that this measure reflects your voters, the folks that you represent, so that the city could appropriately represent the community to which you serve. And, um, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that and, and I'll let your wisdom decide how you move forward.
I'll just, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And you know, I sit here trying to figure out what the best way to approach this so we can have success in this measure. And I, I, as I look to Mayor Protem to find the words that we can find some meaning around, um, and listening to Councilmember, uh, Lada's, um, remarks, and then validated by Mr. Bernard's statement and, and basically telling us, stay on track. Come back over here, I'm going to have to, um, pull back my, as to changing the verbiage of this, is just going with this and focusing more on the educational pieces that these items are there, but not too much on, on the details for this.
May we, um, may we, the city attorney, to call for the process, but then come back to the August ninth with the final wording?
Well, Madam Mayor, we really do need a decision today. Um, but that, you know, what, what is being suggested by, by the Mayor Protem is not going to be ignored. So what we need to get before the electorate is a ballot measure. And this is what has been tested with the proper, um, polling process. This is what's being recommended by our consultants. And it's been reviewed by my office and by the City Manager's Office. This is what is believed to be the language that is going to be most likely to be successful. But we also do, will have a follow-up with a informational or educational program, which can include, uh, the language that's being suggested by the Mayor Protem. Now, again, as a lawyer, words mean a lot and word crafting means a lot. And, you know, what's being suggested is a, is a tested series of, of words. But it's up to the council. You know, if the council wants to incorporate what's being suggested by the Mayor Protem, that's what's going to go forward. If the council's comfortable with what's being suggested by consultant, that's what's going to go forward. So at this point in time, it's, it's actually.
Do we have a motion from the council? Do we have a second?
I second, Councilmember Laura.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Elias?
Yes.
Councilmember Camacho?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lutz?
Yes.
Doctor, um, Nina Sanchez?
Yes, with the instruction to work with Mayor Protem on his words with the.
We will certainly incorporate everything, all those suggestions into the educational information process.
Thank you.
Yes.
So just to clarify, we're going to work on the educational portion, but unanimously, the council has voted to keep the wording exactly the way it is, which is example, address homelessness rather than reduce homelessness. Is that correct? And we're going off of this statistics off of the data of, 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 of those that were polled.
Not only that, these were time-tested language, uh, different measures, uh, throughout the LA County. And I'm also assuming the state of California as well, Richard, as you have worked in different jurisdictions.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on. Uh, we're going to move back to item one.
And item one, Madam Mayor, is, is a simple, uh, action by the council that, uh, was actually an item that was not, uh, incorporated into the original, uh, presentation on the term limit measure. Uh, this is to direct the city attorney, which is my office, to prepare an impartial analysis. So we just, this is more cleanup, uh, cleanup item. We'd ask the city council to adopt the resolution as presented.
May I make a motion to approve this?
Do we have a second? One second?
Mayor can second.
And I'd like to, I'd like to make an, uh, an alternate motion, changing the, uh, wording of this item here. Shall a term limit served by the city council members and the city Pico Rivera to be limited to three lifetime, four-year terms? Can I get a second?
Actually, Mayor, that's not before you, but, you know, motion is before you. We've already approved what was adopted to last council, but it's up for, it's up for the council decision.
Okay. So right now, what's up for a second is the, uh, the, the term limit of what was decided last time.
It's actually the lang- what's being suggested for the Mayor Protem is the exact language of what was before you last.
But, uh, Mayor, my.
Oh, yes, I will.
Oh, okay, sorry, I lost my signal.
And the grounds that, going along with the same consultant, we know this, the language, uh, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, city attorney, was set, uh, by the precedent that was passed in the twenty-twenty election by the Rancho School Board, um, when they set their term limits. Is that correct? Similar language?
Well, actually, this is not. Um, we'd have to bring back to you the original resolution, adopt calling for the election. This is something completely different that's being suggested. Today, it's only the request for, um, these, uh, an impartial analysis on what you approved for the last meeting. So if the council's giving direction to bring back the, the language itself, we'd have to do that through next. That's sorry, that would be, hey, you'd have to call special needs. I, I don't, we're, we're, what's before you is merely a cleanup item on the process. If you don't adopt the measure before you, then by, you know, our office won't prepare an impartial analysis. But the council already considered and acted upon the exact language of what's going to go to the electorate. Uh, what I think Mayor Protem is suggesting is a lifetime three-year term versus a, what was presented and approved, which is a uh, three-year, uh, three terms. And then if there's a gap, you can come back after that. So.
With, with the stipulation that it's this one forward.
Yes.
From November onward, not considering past, uh, terms.
We, we already voted on that motion last time and that motion failed. So what we're doing right now is cleaning up what we voted from last time. So, um, while I recognize, um, your, your.
So the mayor, your second was to the vice mayor's motion?
To the first motion.
Okay, so, um, well, it sounded, I'm sorry, it sounded like your motion, your second was to the, but what the Mayor Protem was offering was a substitute motion. If there's no second to the Mayor Protem's second, uh, second motion, then Mayor Protem's motion dies for a lack of second. And then we go back to Councilmember Camacho's motion.
Okay, I seconded Councilmember Camacho's motion to move forward as he has suggested.
And, and I think, just so the record's clear, is there any other council member that wishes to second Mayor Protem's motion? So then we go, so your second mayor is to Councilmember Camacho's motion, which is to approve the resolution, uh, setting priorities for written arguments and directing city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. That's the motion on the floor at this point. And with your permission, Mayor, we can have a seat for.
Councilmember Elias? Councilmember Elias?
Yes, I'm still, I'm still trying to figure out what that, uh, that motion was. Can you please repeat it again?
Uh, Ma- Madam Mayor, members of the council, the motion before the council is to adopt the resolution as presented to you, setting the priorities for written arguments, directing city attorney to prepare an initial impartial analysis for the city council term limit measure that was approved at your previous, uh, previous council.
Oh, so we're approving just what we've done before. We, we, yeah, yes, okay, uh, yes.
Councilmember Camacho?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lutz?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Machine cares. Thank you.
The, the last item is the, um, required AB three-sixty-one findings to, uh, do you declare the emergency status of, uh, universe?
We have a motion to approve item number, the final item was Assembly Bill three-sixty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second, I don't, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I forgot we have the gentleman on TV.
Aye.
Did you hear, Councilmember Elias? Councilmember Elias, are you there?
Yes.
So did you, can you, uh, vote by aye on item number three?
I said, yes, aye.
Sorry, we couldn't hear you. Thank you. Motion, you know, thank you. Thank you. Uh, I think that is all for our agenda. Correct? Thank you. Maybe I call a meeting adjourned. Thank you.